...meeting of the President and Board of Trustees at the Village at Tinley Park, Cookett, Will County, held on Tuesday, June 17, 2025, beginning at 6:04 PM. Everyone, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney?
Present.
Trustee Mueller?
Here.
Trustee Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
President Glotz?
Present, thank you. Item number one, is there a motion to consider approval of the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item one, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you. Item number two, is there a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the regular Village Board meeting held on June 3, 2025?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item two, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next, we have item three, trustee Michael Mueller.
I'd like to make a motion to recognize the promotion of several members of our Fire Department staff to the rank of engineer.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Been looking forward to this. Thank you, Bill. The mic can't pronounce anyone's name, so.
Are you doing them all? So they said that one guy's on his way? We'll go. Okay, well, we'll have to do the last one. If you could all raise your right hand, please. Just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matthew Bless.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of engineer.
The duties of engineer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Everybody stay put. I just wanted to, real quick, I want to get a picture with elected officials, but I want to kind of explain his position of engineer is probably one of the biggest steps in the fire service, because now you have not only the responsibility of driving, operating the pump and the ladder, but also when the lieutenant is not there, they act in the capacity of being the officer. So there's a lot of stuff that's thrown at these gentlemen, and I know they're all going to do a great job and congratulate every one of them. We want to get a picture with all the elected officials first, so if all those elected officials could come in, please. Come on up, guys. They were coming from the station, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so we get sworn in. I'm wrong. If you could just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state my name.
I, John Brennan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of engineer.
The duties of engineer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Everybody stay put. I just wanted to, real quick, I want to get a picture with elected officials, but I want to kind of explain his position of engineer is probably one of the biggest steps in the fire service, because now you have not only the responsibility of driving, operating the pump and the ladder, but also when the lieutenant is not there, they act in the capacity of being the officer. So there's a lot of stuff that's thrown at these gentlemen, and I know they're all going to do a great job and congratulate every one of them. We want to get a picture with all the elected officials first, so if all those elected officials could come in, please. Come on up, guys. They were coming from the station, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so we get sworn in. I'm wrong. If you could just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state my name.
I, John Brennan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of engineer.
The duties of engineer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Thank you. If you guys move over here. So we're going to call them up individually, give them their helmet shields and their badge, and the family, you're welcome to come up and take a picture with them, so. I'll get you guys all over this way first, and then. Tell me you got the, call the names. Tom? And once you take a picture with your family, then you guys can go back, then.
Brad Raymer?
Or if you want to stay for the meeting, you can too.
Thank you. Thank you.
He's bringing up the boxes.
Everybody take a step. One more, one more to the left. One more to the left, okay, squeeze. Okay. Look this way, look this way. All right.
Matt? Bring him up. I mean, it's good, not good. You better hurt me up. She's got a smile. Congratulations. No, 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 no. You didn't bring your dinosaur?
No, I didn't bring a dinosaur.
He doesn't want to take a picture with me, so you better.
Somebody's got to do it.
Somebody's got to do it.
Thank you very much.
Got it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
One more, ready?
Got it, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number four, received presentation of the Tinley Park Business Spotlight,
Apple Chevrolet and the American Legion Post 615 by President Glotz and Clerk O'Connor. Clerk, would you like to go first?
Sure. Apple Chevrolet, located at 8585 West 159th Street, has an experienced sales team who are committed to finding you the best possible deal on a Chevrolet sedan, truck, or SUV, along with knowledgeable service technicians to help keep your vehicle on the road for many years to come. They are celebrating their 50th anniversary in Tinley Park and have won Chevrolet's Dealer of the Year for the past three years in a row. The village is pleased to welcome Olivia Alafreitch of Apple Chevrolet, and you might want to correct me if I did that wrong, and apologize.
Yeah, that's my daughter, third generation. I'm John Alfervich, better known as John Elfie, and yes, we've been in Tinley Park for 50 years, and actually, on 159th Street, when we first moved in, it was a two-lane highway, and there was only a three-man crew with the Fire Department, so things have changed. Anyway, we pride ourselves, and like you mentioned, last three years in a row, we've been Dealer of the Year, and it's a prestigious award with General Motors, it's their highest award, and it's really the community that helped us grow. We always did business with a handshake. Our service department is now, we do about 150 cars a day in our service department, and we serve the community very well. Our biggest change that really was a game changer for Apple Chevrolet was in 1981. In 1981, we had a, we came over from Roseland, Illinois, and we had some bad times in '76, and so it was a struggle to get here, and like I said, it was during the Zabrocki days, and it was a two-lane highway, and there wasn't many dealers, and we were the pioneers of trying to help the business grow here in Tinley Park. But in 1981, severe interest rates were about 21% at the time. It was hard to hold the car inventory, because we pay interest on our vehicles, and no one was buying, and it was, we're doomed for bankruptcy. Well, it just so happened, we called, at the time, you only were able to advertise by radio, TV, and newspaper, so we called our agent, and we told her that we were going to have a, going out of business sale, and she comes in, she goes, "You mind if I order a pizza?" Like, this is not a party, we're, you know, going out of business here, and we'd like your help and advice, and then just put us in the right papers to get rid of some of this inventory. Well, her ordering pizza was a strategy to call, at the time, it was 555-1212, and at the time, Illinois Bell was, had a new system. A system called for their reps to look for a business or individual or somebody alphabetically, and if you asked for an auto dealer, in her case, she asked for a pizza joint, it was Rilios Pizza, which was right down the street, so we ordered a pizza, and then she asked, she said, "Let's change your name." So we changed our name to, at the time, Apple Pie Chevrolet. She wanted us to be on top, and believe it or not, the phone started ringing, and we kind of turned everything around, and we learned at that point, we didn't want the community to forget our name. So myself and a few other managers, we got together and saying, "Okay, let's not just be in the community, let's be a part of it." So we do a lot of things that made us very successful today, such as Toys for Tots, blood drives, dog adoptions, we gave, you know, already raised about a quarter of a million dollars for the USO, we got Corvette shows, military package events, and, you know, going back to Toys for Tots, we are now the largest single point for delivery of toys in the Chicagoland area. We beat the Harley guys, so, but that doesn't, you don't do it yourself, you do it with giving, and Apple Chevrolet's been giving back for a lot of years, and the community sure responded, so I'd like to thank everybody from Tinley Park and the next generation. Olivia, she's still going to do it, a handshake and her words, so we're here to stay for a while, and thank you for, you know, what you've done over the years, too, helping us out, because many times, we've been in this building asking for, you know, maybe harder things to do, but you did it, you helped us out, so made a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, we know you do very many things for the community, but one thing you forgot, because you do so many, is that you help out with the Pinewood Derby for the Cub Scouts on my pack many years ago, and we appreciate that so much, that you have taken interest in our Cub Scouts, that of course lead to Boy Scouts, so thank you very much for that help.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. Next, we have the American Legion Post 615, located at 17423 67th Court, is a part of the nation's largest wartime veterans service organization, committed to mentoring youth and sponsorship of wholesome programs in the Tinley Park community. The village is pleased to welcome Ed Nades of the American Legion Post 615.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to the board. It's been an honor to be invited here by Lisa Butler and my good friend Kelly Oswald, wonderful ladies who work very hard for the village and for the public. Anyway, my name is Ed Nades, I'm from American Legion Post 615. I've been a member of the SAL, Sons of the American Legion, for 17 years, and we are committed to our veterans and our veteran programs, and mentoring our youth through summer camp programs and state police programs that we send youths to on a bus down to Springfield. But anyway, I'm here to tell you about our post. We are located, as the mayor said, 17423 South 67th Court, right across the street from the Voc Arts Center. We are open seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. Our canteen is open for those 21 and over. We offer gaming, and we have an ATM on site, but I'm here to tell you about our events and our wonderful banquet hall facility that we have for rent. We host everything from our village meetings sometimes, to our UPS comes in there, U.S. Postal Service, our Legion meetings, and we host our recruits from the Great Lakes Naval Base on Christmas Day, all day long. These are open to the public, these events, as well as our Tinley Park Irish Parade Celebration, family-friendly event, where you can bring your children and your family and have a great time with entertainment, and we serve up the best corned beef sandwiches in the world, courtesy of Whittingham's Meats, everybody knows Whittingham's. And also, we do our nine weeks of fish fries, which we just wrapped up with much success due to the help from Kelly and the village here for advertising. And also, we do, every year, we do an event, we had it last year, along with our sponsor, Orland Toyota, we are hosting 971 FM, The Drives, Chicago's classic rock, this Thursday, June 19, 2025. We are hosting Sherman and Tingle will be at our post for all you classic rock lovers, and we are opening at 4:00 p.m. We have the show from 5:00 to 7:00. We have Jay Vanna, one of Chicago's finest police officers and musicians, will be performing from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We are giving free appetizers from 5:00 to 6:00, our world-famous chicken wings and fries, and it's a free event. It's also our Queen of Hearts Night. We got our Queen of Hearts, and we're giving away a 28-inch Blackstone Flat Top Grill at 8:00 o'clock. That's, entry is free on that. And also, we are selling raffle tickets for a $400 Primo Cut gift card. So that's a whole lot of, whole lot of food there for 400 bucks. Nice evening out if you win that. But also, I want to mention, our hall is available for rent. You can contact us, 708-532-1737, or stop in and speak with one of our representatives, and they'll give you availability and pricing on that. And also, if we have any veterans in here, or you know of any veterans, or sons, daughters, or grandsons or granddaughters of veterans, our post will love to have you join us. I left some information in the vestibule out there about that, as well as information for the event on Thursday, and I'm inviting everybody in here to come on out and see us. Again, it's going to be a great time, and Sherman and Tingle would love to see you, and they give away concert tickets and all that kind of stuff and do trivia, so it's a 21 and over event. We'd like to see you on Thursday. And with that said, I would like to thank all of you for inviting me, Mr. Mayor, and the Village Board. It's a wonderful thing that you're doing here for all of us. And with that said, God bless you all, God bless all of our veterans, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
If I may, Ed?
Yes, sir.
I'm also an SAL member. I'm over this side. I'm also an SAL member, and I want to thank you guys also for what you've done for my Boy Scout troop, 911. We've held trivia nights there, we've had pancake breakfasts there, so we do appreciate what you've done for the community of scouting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Thank you much. Hope to see everybody Thursday, and I invited the Police Department to. Thanks, Ed.
I went last year, and it was a lot of fun.
Talk to you later. Bye-bye. Next, we have item number five. They have a motion to consider approval of the following consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you. Consent agenda items have been publicly posted and available for review according to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Would anyone from the board like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Let the record reflect, there are none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item five, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number seven. Is there a motion to consider adopting ordinance 2025-0-019, amending Chapter 112 Title 11 of the Village Code related to liquor license classifications in the Village of Tinley Park? So moved?
I'll second.
Thank you. This item amends the liquor code to add the AVT classification, which is a temporary two-year license. The item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole held prior to this meeting. The ordinance is eligible for adoption. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item six, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan? Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have item six. Is there a motion to consider appointing ordinance 2025-0-019, amending Chapter 112 Title 11 of the Village Code related to liquor license classifications in the Village of Tinley Park? So moved?
I'll second.
Thank you. This item amends the liquor code to add the AVT classification, which is a temporary two-year license. The item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole held prior to this meeting. The ordinance is eligible for adoption. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Roll call for item six, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number seven. Is there a motion to consider adopting ordinance 2025-0, I'm sorry, -0-020, awarding a Class AVT liquor license to the station at 6657 South Street?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you. This item awards a Class AVT license to the station. Item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole on June 3, 2025. This ordinance is eligible for adoption. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Would the petitioner like to make any comments?
No comments.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item seven, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan? Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Item eight, trustee Dennis Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-080, approving and awarding an Oak Park Avenue facade grant to Peter, I apologize now in case I butcher this, Mr. Akus of Eggheads Cafe for the property located at 16952 Oak Park Avenue.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, Dennis. Thank you.
Eggheads Cafe is a breakfast and lunch restaurant located in downtown Tinley Park. Peter Master, Master Akus plans to replace damaged veneer bricks and install new canvas windows, window awnings, excuse me. The facade grant shall be an amount to not exceed $16,550. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Peter, anything you want to add? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item eight, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan? Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Peter. Item nine, trustee Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to consider adopting Resolution Number 2025-R-079, approving a contract between the Village of Tinley Park and Aries Inc. for Kimberly-Hegge drainage improvements, phases 3, 4, 5, and 6B.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Please consider approving a contract with Aries Inc. in the amount of $2,788,582, with a 10% contingency, and $160,000 for construction observation services totaling $3,227,451.20, and this resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions for?
But also, I want to mention, our hall is available for rent, you can contact us, seven oh eight five-three-two seventeen thirty-seven, or stop in and speak with one of our representatives, and they'll give you availability and pricing on that. And also, if we have any veterans in here, or you know of any veterans, or sons, daughters, or grandsons or granddaughters of veterans, our post will love to have you join us. I left some information in the vestibule out there about that, as well as information for the event on Thursday, and I'm inviting everybody in here to come on out and see us. Again, it's going to be a great time, and Sherman and Tingle would love to see you, and they give away concert tickets and all that kind of stuff and do trivia, so it's a twenty-one and over event, we'd like to see you on Thursday. And with that said, I would like to thank all of you for inviting me, Mr. Mayor, and the Village Board, it's a wonderful thing that you're doing here for all of us. And with that said, God bless you all, God bless all of our veterans, and God bless the United States of America, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
If I may, Ed?
Yes, sir.
I'm also an SAL member, I'm over this side, I'm also an SAL member, and I want to thank you guys also for what you've done for my Boy Scout troop nine-one-one, we've held trivia nights there, we've had pancake breakfasts there, so we do appreciate what you've done for the community of scouting.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, thank you much, hope to see everybody Thursday, and I invited the Police Department, too. Thanks, Ed.
I went last year, and it was a lot of fun.
Talk to you later. Next, we have item number five. They have a motion to consider approval of the following consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Consent agenda items have been publicly posted and available for review according to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, would anyone from the board like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Let the record reflect, there are none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item five, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you. Next, we have item six. Is there a motion to consider appointing ordinance two-zero-two-five dash O dash zero-one-nine, amending chapter one-twelve, title eleven, of the village code related to liquor license classifications in the village of Tinley Park?
So move?
I'll second.
Thank you. This item amends the liquor code to add the AVT classification, which is a temporary two-year license. The item was discussed at the committee of the whole held prior to this meeting, the ordinance is eligible for adoption. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Roll call for item six, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number seven. Is there a motion to consider adopting ordinance two-zero-two-five dash zero dash, I'm sorry, dash O dash zero-two-zero, awarding a class AVT liquor license to the station at sixty-six fifty-seven South Street?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. This item awards a class AVT license to the station, item was discussed at the committee of the whole on June third, two thousand twenty-five, this ordinance is eligible for adoption. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Would the petitioner like to make any comments?
No comments.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item seven, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you, everybody, thank you. Item eight, Trustee Dennis Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move we consider adopting resolution two-zero-two-five dash R dash zero-eight-zero, approving and awarding an Oak Park Avenue facade grant to Peter, I apologize now in case I butcher this, Master Oxus, of Eggheads Cafe for the property located at one-six-nine-five-two Oak Park Avenue.
I'll second it. Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you. Eggheads Cafe is a breakfast and lunch restaurant located in downtown Tinley Park. Peter Master Oxus plans to replace damaged veneer bricks and install new canvas windows, window awnings, excuse me. The facade grant shall be an amount to not exceed sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting, this resolution is eligible for adoption.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Peter, anything you want to add? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item eight, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you, everyone, thanks, Peter. Item nine, Trustee Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to consider adopting resolution number twenty-two-five dash R dash zero-seven-nine, approving a contract between the village of Tinley Park and Aries Inc. for Kimberly Hage drainage improvements, phases three, four, five, and six B.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan, please consider approving contract with Aries Inc. in the amount of two million seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, with a ten percent contingency, and a hundred and sixty thousand for construction observation services totaling three million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty cents, and this resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions for John's Drainage? Record reflect, there are none, and one laugh by Bill Brennan. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Roll call for item nine, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you, everyone. Item number ten, receive comments from the staff. Comments from the table on the right? Item eleven, receive comments from the board, would anyone from the board care to comment?
I will. Real quick, just want to remind everyone that this Saturday is our first music in the plaza, featured the band Hoodwinked, and it goes on at seven p.m. to ten p.m., and that is in Zabrocki Plaza. Can't wait.
Starts. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan, I just want to add, I want to thank, I see newly-elected Orland Township trustee Frank Williams is here, thank you for coming to the board meeting. Anyone else? Next, we have item number twelve, receive comments from the public. Would anyone from the public care to make a public comment?
Good evening, I think everybody here knows who I am, but for the record, my name is Maureen Dillon, I'm here to talk about Kira and Friends' annual lemonade stand. It's going to be on June twenty-eighth this year, which is a Saturday, at noon, and the location is one-sixty-nine oh-six Sandy Lane. Again, it starts at noon. A little bit about the lemonade stand, in case anybody hasn't heard of it, it's not just any old lemonade stand. Kira and Friends, Kira happens to be my granddaughter, she'll be sixteen in two weeks, which is crazy, but she, this will be her twelfth year doing the lemonade stand for charity. During, she took one year off, which was last year, because she was in Savannah, Georgia, working on a mission trip, but during that time, she's literally raised tens of thousands of dollars for various charities. A hundred percent of the proceeds that she raised goes directly to the charity. The charity that she's choosing this year is going to be Tinley Wish, so a local charity right here in Tinley's, all the money's going to stay right in the community. Kira loves Tinley Wish, and Tinley Wish, a little bit about Tinley Wish, Tinley Wish just created a whole new board, we have one, one old board member coming back, but the president of Tinley Wish now happens to be my son, Liam Fitzmaurice, he's also a Tinley Park firefighter. We have another Tinley Park firefighter, Pete, I'm not going to try and say his last name. Yeah. Everybody knows Pete. We have a nine-one-one operator, we have Public Works, a gentleman from Public Works on the board, and this year, for the first year, they allowed three citizens to become board members. I myself was voted in as a board member. Cheryl Bobbitt, who actually, many of you probably know her, she worked, she's retired, but she worked at the fire department many, many years in the office, and then her daughter, Jackie Bobbitt, who actually worked for the chamber for many, many years. So we're super excited to ramp up Tinley Wish, raise some money, check us out, check out the Tinley Wish Facebook page, you'll get some information on there, we're in the process of updating it, so it's probably going to be about a week or two before we get donation information on there, but if anybody wants to donate to Tinley Wish, go to the Kira and Friends' annual lemonade stand Facebook page, and there's information on there on how you can donate electronically. If somebody wants to write a check to Tinley Wish and, you know, bring it to the lemonade stand, it's a tax write-off, they are registered, not-for-profit, so you can do that, and if anybody, we're hoping to get maybe a car dealership, maybe? Maybe to partner with the lemonade stand and maybe match what she makes that day, that would be awesome. We're looking for business, businesses to maybe partner with us for Tinley Wish, to, you know, help us increase our funds, make some donations, so if anybody knows of anybody, a business owner, or anybody that would like to, you know, join us and partner with us, we'd be happy to, you know, to talk to them. I'm going to give my information, since there's limited information on the Tinley Wish page right now, but I'll give out my personal information, if anybody's interested or knows somebody, my email address is M. Dillon, D.I.L.L.O.N. one-one-two-seven at gmail dot com, and my cell phone is seven oh eight six zero nine zero nine nine one. So again, lemonade stands on June twenty-eighth, starting at noon, and it goes to whenever, as long as we have customers, you know, we'll be out there slinging lemonade. We're hoping to get a celebrity athlete out this year, I'm still waiting to hear back, so we'll keep you posted on that, on the Facebook page, and, yeah, just come on out and join us, it's actually, it's a fun time, and we usually have, like I said, it's, it's not your typical little, like, lemonade stand, it's, I mean, all of you guys have, pretty much everybody here has been there, but it's like the first responders all show up, lights and sirens, and, you know, everybody from the village, it's just, it's a good time, you know, it's, it's a really good time, so, any questions or comments?
Last time I was there, I think I was there for like two, three hours.
Yeah, 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 we do have some treats on the side for the adults, so.
That's not why. No, it's just, it's a very fun environment, so.
Yeah, it is, and, and, I mean, believe it or not, we have average, we have about three hundred people that come through on that day, so like I said, it's not your typical lemonade stand where, you know, Kira's serious about this, so.
I love the tradition.
Yeah, I love that she's still doing it even though she's a teenager and going to be driving soon, and.
How many years has she done Tinley Wish?
Sixteen.
Well, the lemonade stand, this will be her, well.
How many years has she done it specifically for Tinley Wish?
Oh, Tinley, this will be the second year for Tinley Wish, yeah, yeah, she did do Tinley Wish prior.
And what did she raise from last time?
She, I think it was over five thousand dollars, maybe, so quite a bit. Yeah, in one day, at the bottom of my driveway, so. So, any questions? I know, right, yeah, yeah. Well, thank you very much for letting me speak about it, I appreciate it, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to try and follow that? Next, we have item thirteen. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the following? A, not the beeping, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. B, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
So move? I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for adjournment, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you, we are adjourned and will not be coming back, thank you.